The Rochester City Council Candidate Forum continues.
Again, welcome to our ABC 6 Rochester Post Bulletin candidate debate. Our candidates are running for Rochester City Council in Ward 2, 4, and 6, as well as the candidates who are running for the soon-to-be vacated seat of Rochester City Council President currently held by Randy Saber. I am your co-moderator, Betsy Singer, with ABC 6 News, along with Randy Peterson with the Rochester Post Bulletin. This debate is being broadcast live right now on ABC 6's social media platforms. For those watching online, feel free to write in your questions, and our producers will be fielding those questions, and we will try to get to viewer questions from online. Again, for those who are watching online, broadcasting, since being on social media and the mask mandate that went into effect last night at midnight, under the governor's guidelines for broadcasting, we are not required to have our masks on as long as we are social distanced. So you will see that the candidates, for clarity purposes, and when Randy asks the questions, and the fact that I am not wearing a mask, still stays within the guidelines from the governor's mandate. We just finished up our first segment, which was with our Ward 2 candidates for Rochester City Council. We are now moving into Ward 4, where we have four candidates. I will not forget to allow you all your opening statements. I apologize to our Ward 2 candidates. I did forget that. We jumped right into questions. Let me introduce our candidates. Kelly Rae Kirkpatrick is an independent design contractor, community organizer for a sustainable urban agriculture company. She grew up in Rochester and currently sits as president of the Eastside Neighborhood Association. PJ Calkins is the chief strategy officer for a digital marketing agency. He and his wife are raising two young daughters. They live in the Slatterly Park neighborhood. Katrina Pullum is a small business owner in the fitness and family entertainment sector. She was born and raised in Rochester and is raising her family in Ward 4, as well as that is where her business is located. And Abel Burido is a sales manager at a home and electronics and appliance store. He is originally from California and has lived in Rochester a little less than two years. With that, we will go with opening statements. Kelly Rae Kirkpatrick, we will start with you.
Thank you, Betsy. Good morning, everyone, and thank you especially to our host this morning dedicating to bringing this forum to the voters of Rochester, and thank you also to everyone watching. It's important to get to know the issues and get to know your candidates so you can take proactive steps in making Rochester the city that we want it to be. I'm deeply passionate about serving Rochester. I was born here, graduated from John Marshall, as did my parents. I've been attending city council meetings and learning all I can about our city-run legislative process for quite some time. So stepping up to run for Ward 4 City Council is merely an extension of the community efforts that I've been showing thus far. I represent the Eastside Neighborhood Association, as Betsy said, as their president, and I also represent other neighborhoods across our city because we, the people of Rochester, are what the city is all about. Hard decisions will need to be made as we move Rochester forward through this very trying economic time, and I bring loads of advocacy and collaborative decision-making to the table. We need to bring our diverse voices together. We have significant gaps in opportunity, equity, and quality of life. How can we work together to make Rochester better for all? Without strong economic recovery, our community cannot become inclusive and offer a sustainable quality of life for Rochester's citizens, and that's why I'm running, because I listen to people, I get things done, and I have a heart.
Abel Burido.
Hi, everyone. My name is Abel. I'm running for City Council. As I mentioned before, I come from California. I have lived in two years here in Rochester. I grew up in California in Guadalajara, Mexico. That's why I have little difficulties with my language. You noticed. In California, I used to be involved in my community, helping others in different boards and things. Here in Rochester, I fall in love with the city. This is my new home. This is where I was spending the rest of my life, and I just want to represent the people and be their voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Abel. PJ Calkins.
Thank you. Hi, my name is PJ Calkins, and I love Rochester. The residents, the small businesses of Ward 4, they want to be heard. They want to be part of the processes and the decisions that are shaping our city and our neighborhoods. I'm running for Ward 4 because I want to go to work for my neighborhood and use my unique set of skills, experience, knowledge, and passion to be that voice for all Ward 4 residents. My experience as a leader dates back to the early '90s, when I became an entrepreneur at eight years old and dreamed of running for office in 2020. In that 27 years that followed, I've continued to be a positive collaborative leader that delivers results. That experience has taught me what it takes to be a hard-working leader who continues to move things forward. I will work hard and together with all Ward 4 residents to navigate the challenging and unprecedented times we are about to face, and I'll move this city forward for you. Thank you.
Thank you, PJ. Katrina.
So after my first forum, I thought long and hard about what I wanted people to know about who I am. So first, this is what I came up with. My name is Katrina Pullum. I was born and raised here locally, just outside of town. My family has been in this area since the 1800s, when they first came here and started farming. That same family farm is still in my family. My grandparents actually live on it right now. We raise cattle and farm over 1,000 acres just outside of town. I spent most of my career in banking and finance. I've been a personal banker, a business banker, a mortgage loan officer, and lastly, a compliance officer for a bank. I process budget reports, followed federal and state banking regulations, and made sure that our bank was adhering to all changes. I am not a politician. I had no desire to run for City Council until this year. I promise to work hard, learn every day as I go, and ask the right questions. Change is needed today, and that's what's driving me to run for City Council. I had no idea what I was doing on June 2nd, when I signed myself up to fight for change and fight for small businesses in our community. But I started calling current council members, business owners, people in charge of our neighborhoods, nonprofits, our police chief, our construction union reps, reaching out to our youth, stopping random strangers on the street and asking them their opinions, learning, asking for advice, and most importantly, listening to the issues and challenges that they face. I've learned so much in the short two months and have made great connections within the community. It's this type of outreach that we need right now more than ever. We need new innovative paths to bring us together as a community and truly rebuild and thrive. The old ways are not going to work, and it will not bring us out of this pandemic successfully. Our children and youth are watching today, and we need to show them that we are a city of compassion for all of its citizens, and every single person matters, and show them what it looks like to work together.
Thank you, Katrina.
Thank you. For the first question, and welcome candidates, but for the first question, we'll reverse order, so I'll start with Katrina. The City Council recently approved a plan for $5.1 million in Federal CARES Act funding in response to the current pandemic. What additional steps does the city need to take to help individuals and businesses recover from the pandemic?
Well, this one is obviously a question that I focus very highly on, and I've been paying attention to because I am a business owner in town, and fortunately, I've been extremely affected by this pandemic and the closures, and I speak to business owners every day. The CARES Act is a great opportunity for our city to rebuild and help the community thrive. It's a great opportunity to make sure that those funds get to these small businesses. They need our help. They need our support. The biggest challenge right now is making sure that we are looking at those funds and making good decisions. There's already a few pieces that are in the CARES Act budget that I don't necessarily agree with and don't know if they're the right choices. There's a lot of questions that need to be asked, and people need to ask those tough questions to make sure that it needs to be done. But most importantly, we need to pay attention. We need to ask the questions. We need to make sure we're including our business owners and actually finding out what's going on on the ground and helping them.
Thank you. PJ, same question.
Yeah, I think it's great that the CARES Act was passed, but I do not think it's enough. As a small business owner myself, I agree with Katrina. We need to look at how that actually influences and can have positive impacts. So I think working collaboratively with business owners to find out exactly what they need, is it a property tax cut? Is it incentive lowering sales taxes? Is there other fees and things that we can cut out of their cost of doing business to ensure that they can survive and then thrive as we come out of this pandemic? Thank you.
And Abel, same question.
I think it's a good start. I agree with PJ and Katrina. We need to help the business and focus what they really need. We need to make sure every small business is covered before we can help them.
Thank you. And Kelly.
The CARES Act is a great beginning, and I'm thankful that we were able to receive funding for helping out our community. I question a little bit of the proportions and how they're being distributed at this time. I think we can reassess that. I think seeking input from our residents, because the residents are the business owners. The residents work for our larger corporations in the city, and our residents also care for our children and teach our children. So I think that's the first step. Secondly, we need to ensure that all of our public safety needs are going to be met going forward. We have no idea how the pandemic is going to unfold and how long this will continue. And I think we also need to ensure that we have everything that we need, that it takes to move forward while we maintain what we've got right now. Thank you.
Our next question deals with homelessness. Over the last year, there were many issues that were brought up to the City Council about the homeless population in our city. A lot of changes also came about with a new shelter. Do you think the skyways in Rochester should be off limits to the homeless, as it was voted on by our current City Council members? Abel.
That's a tough question. If we could, if we have the community more involved, and we could set up buildings to shelter the homeless, I don't see what would be the problem if we don't have that. We need to open the skyline to the homeless. We also need programs, I'm sorry, we also need programs to help them, and I have a few ideas. If the people lead me, I will share them with them. Thank you.
PJ.
Well, I feel like that's a loaded question. I think the unhoused deserve a collaborative approach so that they don't need to be in the skyway, and so we don't need to make mandates that limit public space for the use of people that live in here in Rochester. As a city councilman, I believe that you need to work collaboratively with the county to find creative solutions to deal with our unhoused population. I think we also, as a city, can look at using our TIF to encourage low-income housing and development, to ensure that we don't need to have people that need to sleep in the skyway. Thank you.
The question is, do you think the skyways should be off limits to people who do not have a home, especially during the cold months? That is what ended up happening. So Katrina.
Yes, so I actually spent two years when I lived outside of the state in North Carolina working with homeless children. So I understand a lot of the needs in our community when it comes to our homeless. The day shelter proved to be a huge success in our town. It showed that it's something that we need to focus on, not just through winter. It's something we need to focus on year-round. In our skyways, I think safety is a big factor. Would you feel safe walking downtown and bringing your family around? And is it showing a welcoming community in general? I don't know. I think that skyways aren't a great place for homeless. I think we need to find a better place. I think we need a permanent day-use facility with resources where we can actually help people. Just letting them sit wherever they are and offering no support and no resources and no services as a city, I don't think we're doing the right thing for our homeless population. There's a couple of great options that I've recently been told about for buildings that the city already owns, and they're right next to some of the main resources that they need, and I think that's the steps we need to look at. How can we take care of them better, and how can we make sure that we're giving them the resources that they need and in a safe place for the entire community?
Kelly Rae.
Thank you. The unhoused in our community deserve the same level of care that all of the other residents do. It's unfortunate that economic input was the driver for the decision-making process to eliminate the unsheltered from our skyways. The amount of energy that goes into heating those spaces during the wintertime actually makes it a worthy place to sleep. They're very, very warm. Do I applaud the idea that the very savvy-thinking unsheltered chose that location? Not necessarily, no, because they're not safe. They don't have access to bathrooms during the evening. What we need to do is make sure that we have housing equity for everyone in our community. So although I don't appreciate the process that was utilized to close down the skyways to our unhoused, I appreciate the fact that good work is being done now, and we're seeking input from the unsheltered to gain what it is that they need most and do for them what they need to be able to seek adequate housing.
Let's stay along those lines if we can and define what you view as affordable housing. Some people have mocked the term affordable housing in Rochester, saying it doesn't exist. What can you do as a city council member to ensure that we have more affordable housing for lower-income families? Abel.
One of the things I would suggest is more, I would say more apartment buildings. The rent is, if people are renting, the rent is too high. We need to do something with property taxes, maybe lower, especially this time with COVID-19. That way, we could help our citizens, and we could put housing affordable. Thank you.
Katrina.
This is something that has been going on for a while here, and it's gotten worse and worse, and I think a lot of people thought that the market was just going to fix it, and it hasn't, and now we, as a city, need to find new ways. I've been looking into this, and I've been listening to other people speak about this and asking questions throughout our community, trying to figure out why, what's driving housing to be so expensive. I think affordable housing is making sure that everybody has a home, that if you are a young adult starting off on your own, that you can afford a house in Rochester. When I was younger, you could, and today you can't. You have to go outside of town to Sturtville or outline communities just to be able to afford a single home. So it starts from the top. I've been paying attention to this, and I think we start with what we are doing with our developers, what we are doing with our builders, and it comes down. If we're charging them outrageous amounts in taxes to build and develop land, that all comes down slowly, one by one, it comes to the bottom, and the bottom suffers. So we have to find a new way. We have to restructure, reimagine, relook at how we do our housing from the top down and find new solutions so housing can actually become affordable in Rochester. And then also, it kind of comes down to every single person individually. When you sell your house, what you list it for. When you are a realtor, the fees, the things that you ask for. It's all of us. It isn't just in the city. It's something that we all have to look into our hearts to truly bring our city back to affordable living.
Kelly Rae.
Thank you. This needs to be a collaborative effort, I believe, between the city and the county. We need to kind of expand our dialogue between the two agencies. I also suggest that the TIF sort of gets restructured. We're currently allowing for 30% of apartment rentals in many of the neighborhoods. I think that's too high. I think that percentage allows for developers to come in and purchase a single-family home, converting it to a multifamily dwelling, and that cuts out the ability for lower-income, workforce-income folks to be able to purchase a home through financing when a developer can scoop it up with cash. There's sort of unfair incentivizing going on there. Another piece that I think is critical is that the TIF currently allows for hybrid housing, but it's not quite adequate enough. I think we can expand through innovative thinking to create neighborhoods where we've got micro-units in a particular building and also some larger units, perhaps with a greater view, where a higher percentage of rent can be actualized from that particular dwelling. And then last, I think it's really important that everyone have access to land, whether it be living in a multifamily residence that has enough land to be able to do what we need to do, plenty of green space surrounding it. So I applaud what the city's doing with the R2X zoning, and I applaud the building that we're doing, but I think we need to reorganize the structure and focus on housing instead of the economy and how we're just going to be planning for the workforce. When we plan for 40% to 60% of AMI, it discludes many, many of the renters and potential homeowners in our community.
Thank you. PJ.
Yeah, I agree with Kelly on that. We need to be using our TIF more strategically and making sure that there is affordable housing being built with that strategic opportunity. I also think we need to lower fees. As Katrina said, developers that we charge enormous amounts of money to build buildings, that cost gets handed down to the homeowners or renters within that space. But I also believe we need to work collaboratively with groups like the Rochester Area Foundation that have a first-time homebuyer program that helps people get into a home that they otherwise would not be able to afford. I think expanding that, looking at ways for promoting that more so people know about it, I think that's a good start to help with the affordable housing issue. Thanks.
The recent zoning changes along Broadway and 4th Street have been brought up. As development continues along these corridors, has the city done enough to protect the nearby neighborhoods? Let's start with PJ.
No, they have not. So far, it's, you know, Ward 4 residents want to be heard. They want to be part of the process. There has been some movement and improvement on that, but I definitely think that there's more room for improvement. People in those communities, they know development's coming. They know growth is coming. They want to be a part of that decision. They want to ensure that their voice is being heard, and so I think the city could do more and do better at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Rae.
I agree with PJ on this one. No, no, the city has not done enough, but I believe they are starting to. I specifically spoken with Dylan Dombrowski and also Sam Budzina. When the mini roundabout at Center Street and 11th Avenue East was presented to our community, our Eastside Neighborhood, we knew nothing about it. We composed a letter to the City Council and to city administration to let them know that we were very against this project. I personally went and measured the mini roundabout that is being compared on the northwest side of Rochester on 18th Avenue, just south of 55th Street. The setbacks are completely different. The existing roadway is completely different. We want transparency from our city government. We want accountability from our city government. We want to be involved. We don't want to design projects, but we want you to reach out to us, and we want to understand that you care about our neighborhoods and that you're actually concerned about more than the economic process, because we are all here to build equity together, to supply our economy, and to live in our neighborhoods together. Thank you.
Thank you. And Abel.
I have to agree with PJ and Kelly. The City Council has to listen more to the people. There has to be some transparency. The next councilman has to be sure to reach the people, hear them, or they could be fine also, everything that's going on in Rochester.
Thank you. And Katrina.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Talking about development along the main primary corridors into downtown, has the City Council done enough to protect nearby neighborhoods?
So I think that has been clearly answered, and it's no. Everybody is pretty much on board with that across the board, and that's kind of why everyone standing up here is running today, is because everyone feels unheard. We all need to do more. I think the city keeps, for some reason, doing these projects without reaching out or allowing enough time for the citizens in the neighborhoods to understand what's happening until it's already being done, the road's already dug up, and then everyone's saying, "What's going on over here?" And that shouldn't happen. We should be more transparent when things are happening. We need to make sure that the neighborhoods are aware and people have a voice before it's being done. We have great opportunity downtown. Everyone knows growth is coming and happening, but we need to figure out new ways to include everybody. I know the Kmart site is going to be another big one that's coming up, and the neighborhoods have came together and spoke out, and they have done a fabulous job speaking out because people are listening to them and taking their advice, and we need to get more people to stand up and do the same.
Thank you.
Four years ago, the City Council approved the purchase and remodel of the Think Bank Building in the northwest part of town for a new police precinct. In part, that was to help ease overcrowding in the downtown government center, where a lot of the police, where the department is headquartered. The cost of the building alone was $3.2 million. An estimated $0.5 million was used for renovation. Where do you stand on spending money on local law enforcement for adding resources, equipment, and more police officers? Kelly Rae.
Thank you, Betsy. I believe we need to spend the amount of funding that it takes to maintain public safety, and I applaud the work of Police Chief Franklin as well as County Sheriff Torquerson, because ultimately, we all need to be moving around our town equitably, fairly, with a good conscience and sound mind, knowing that we will be safe in what we do. That being said, the changes that they're making with the dashboard, working to ease racial tensions, I think they're on the right track, and I think what's going to evolve out of that with all of our voices contributing is that we will have a very sound, continue to have a very sound and safe police department.
Abel, the question is to you. Where do you stand on spending money on local law enforcement for resources, adding officers, or whatever else the chief of police says is needed for the department?
It is really important to first responders to have enough resources, especially the police department. I think they should have all the resources they need. I was just going to make a comment. A few months ago, in the store I work at, somebody stole a few items. A police officer came in, and I told him, "Well, we haven't touched anything. If you want to do powder for fingerprints," the officer just said, "Well, we don't have that in the police department, so I cannot do nothing about it." So that's one of the things, the police need the resources, or they could serve more better the community. Thank you.
PJ.
Can you repeat the question?
Where do you stand on spending money on local law enforcement for additional resources, equipment, and more police officers as the chief would deem necessary?
Great, thank you. While I admit, you know, police budgets and policy is not my strongest, I do feel that this is a very, very important issue. I think we need to encourage and continue to fund our police, but we need to also work alongside them to determine how that budget is being allocated, whether it's more training or social workers, whatever that is, to ensure that it is serving all residents of our community equally across the board. Thank you.
Katrina.
Absolutely, I agree with funding and with public safety and funding our police. The new building was very much needed, and I think everybody who is on our current council agreed with that, too, and hence why it is being built right now. It was something that our community needed. Growing up here, our community has changed drastically in the means of public safety. Things that I grew up doing downtown are things that most kids wouldn't be allowed to do today. We used to drive around and go up and down Broadway, and we all hung out together, small-town people and people from Rochester, and everything was safe and hunky-dory, and it's just not that way anymore. So our police, I have full faith in Chief Franklin. I've met with him, and what I've heard from other people who are running for office, almost everybody has met with him, so that right there speaks volumes about the kind of person that he is. He is willing to take the time to sit down with just about anyone, and I think that he is on the right track. I think our police are doing a great job working together with our community, especially in light of some of the new changes and new issues that have been brought to the surface recently.
Thank you. In response to the death of George Floyd, the city issued a community letter committing to ongoing efforts around social equity. What additional steps does the City Council need to take in this direction? Let's start with Katrina.
I think I kind of just touched on it a little bit already. Chief Franklin is taking this serious. I know that the mayor, as well as the Police Oversight Commission have came together. They've already dug through a lot of our use-of-force policies, and they've came up with a new dashboard. They're hiring, I believe we just put in three new social workers. It's a good step. We'd need to make sure, I think Donovan Bailey had mentioned a great idea about making sure that we're training the police properly, and it starts with a stronger course as we're trying to educate our police force on social issues, economic issues, and different racial disparities that are happening throughout Rochester. How do you handle these situations, and how do we educate our police better? And then just, I think our police chief Franklin asked everybody to open their hearts and look at themselves, and I think that's the most important thing that all of us need to do right now, is open our hearts, look into our hearts, look at yourself, how you are policing, and make sure that you are doing a good job for our community.
PJ, what does the City Council need to do to further address social equity?
Yeah, I think some of the steps they've taken so far have been good. You know, some of the discussions and groups that they brought in to have talks within the community. of the discussions and groups that they brought in to have talks within the community have been great. However, I think it needs to go a step further, where you're actually proactively connecting with those communities and those diverse group leaders, and finding out exactly what they need to ensure that they feel safe, that they feel like they're included. You know, it's one thing to, like I did, put up meet.votPJ.com and say, "Hey, anyone can come schedule a time with me." It's another thing to actually go knock on their door, send them a message, or get their number and send them a text and say, "Hey, I want to talk to you. I want to get your opinion before I make a decision." And really making sure that you get that done before you make that decision. So, that's where I think they can improve on. Thanks.
Abel, what can the council do to address social equity?
Well, so far, they've been doing a great job. I agree with Katrina and PJ. I've been also contacting organizations that represents different people in the community, and they have a good payback. Some of them, they don't really feel safe, especially in the southeast. So, it's something that the council needs to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kelly Ray, same question?
Could you repeat the question?
I'm sorry, I can't.
You left me out on that one.
What additional steps can the city council take to address social equity?
Thank you. I think the city council is doing a good job. We all have to start at the beginning, but racial inequity is prevalent in our community. It remains one of the biggies that we need to address. And I don't believe that it's just the city council responsibility. I might turf that slightly to the school board. The racial inequity and disparity of our young black men and how they are perceived, treated, and their graduation levels in our community is awful. So, all of the legislative bodies across, thank you, all of the legislative bodies across our community need to come together to work on that. We have great inroads started, but we need to do better. And it's gonna come from listening to the residents to see what they need. Thank you, Randy.
The city is facing potential revenue reductions in the wake of the coronavirus pandemic, and candidates have voiced a desire to cut taxes. The result could require some belt tightening. What would be your first target when it comes to potential budget cuts? PJ, we'll start with you.
Wow, that's a really tough question there. While I don't know specifically in the budget what I would cut, here's what I stand for when it comes to that, is being responsible with our spending and ensuring that our decisions that we're making are still including, ensuring that our community can still be inclusive. I think we need to be thoughtful and really decide on the things that we need now and put the things that we want aside for the future. Thank you.
Abel?
Yeah, I have to agree. It's a really difficult question to answer. Do I have an answer right now? I'll get back to everyone.
That's okay. Katrina?
It's something I've been looking into a lot. So, I actually have the 2019 budget, and I've been reviewing it. It's my nighttime reading right now, to go through and see where all of our revenue is coming in and what we're spending our money on previously to learn where we need to make decisions. I don't have all the answers right now on what we need to cut, but we need to come together as a team and make sure that whatever we do, we are looking ahead for the next year right now. I think that needs to be our big focus, is what is best for Rochester today? How do we survive this pandemic? What do we need and what are our necessities? And what do we just want? And move the wants to the side for a little bit.
Kelly Ray?
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
The city facing potential revenue reductions in the wake of the coronavirus pandemic, that could require some pretty tight budgets that we are facing. What would be your first target when it comes to budget cuts?
Thank you. We have a strong property tax base. We have a strong sales tax base. I think the revenues coming in from those areas can be maintained. However, one of the biggest areas that we should be cutting, I believe, are the consultants. We have an ever-expanding downtown area to create jobs, to supply our world-renowned Mayo Clinic. DMC has done an excellent job in the last five years. I'm still waiting to see the next five-year plan. I'm hoping to see that in the next month or two, because it does expire this year, the five-year plan that they initiated in 2015. I think if we are able to cut those consultants, we can use local talents to provide. I also think that while we are cutting that out of the budget, we need to make sure that our public safety is staying up so that we can all maintain our safety during this time. We don't know when it's going to end. I think the park board, I want to applaud the park board. They've done an excellent job of cutting their budgets this year while maintaining our beautiful parks, but they're not gonna be implementing some of the things this year that they had planned and promised. And I understand that we all need to make cuts. It's gonna be hard on all of us, but we're gonna have to pull together. Thank you.
Very good. We now are going to conclude with our closing statements. And since we started with you, Kelly Ray, and ended with you, Katrina, we will start, well, I will let you gather your notes.
Okay, now I'm ready.
Okay, so we have our closing statements, and PJ, let's start with you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. I believe that all Rochester residents deserve to be represented by a leader that will act responsibly with spending, be a positive advocate for a safe and inclusive community, and work hard to help Rochester grow thoughtfully while protecting our environment, our history, and our arts and culture. But we need to be in this together if we want to shape and grow our community as a whole. I'm a collaborative leader with a skill set that produces results and positive outcomes. Through unity, we can ensure that we create the best Rochester possible for all of us, our children, grandchildren, and future generations to come. The task at hand seems large, almost impossible, but one step at a time, we can make change. If you believe like I do, please vote PJ before August 11. Thank you.
Katrina?
So, I'm gonna start with the city of Rochester's vision for 2040. Rochester is a city that cares, where all people are treated with dignity and respect, where residents, employees, and visitors enjoy a high quality of life, where business and industry thrive, and where the land and environment are renewed and sustained for the benefit of all. It is a welcome and diverse community. This is not the path that we are on right now. To truly get to this vision, we need change. We need a new, fresh idea. We need innovative thinking and a diverse council to create a city that works together. We have forgotten to take care of our citizens, to show all citizens respect, and truly be a welcoming city. The pandemic has changed me forever and has made all of us, for the first time, really pay attention with detail to what our city is doing, how we are spending our money, and simply look to them for strong leadership and guidance. I'm running because I'm a small business owner, and I am pretty disappointed in some of the actions that our city has taken. Projects are moving forward that should be put on hold. New pedestrian bridges are being approved that need to be put on hold. Grant funds that should be getting to small businesses in our community are going to projects that aren't needed immediately for the survival of our economy. And our local developers, who spent years making Rochester what it is today, are being pushed out of town. I have witnessed businesses being attacked, threatened by members of our local government, and we need to stop and refocus. Today, we need to find new, fresh ideas, start working together, and carving a path forward to start immediately rebuilding those relationships within our community. I may not have every answer today, but I work hard. I have over 12 years of banking experience. I'm a business owner. I understand budgets. I'm willing to work with everyone to find solutions. I care about our city. I am fully invested in this city. I am fair. I am honest. I am determined to fight for a better tomorrow, and I will make sure that we are protecting and doing what is right for every citizen in Rochester.
Thank you, Katrina. PJ, your closing statement? I'm sorry. Abel, I'm looking right at you, and I said PJ. Abel, your closing statement?
Well, this morning, we have four candidates speaking to you. There is big shoes to fill since the current councilman is retiring. They all have great ideas. Lancaster needs somebody that will represent the people, and it will make the people's voice be heard. I feel like I'm the person. I come from the outside, and I see what Rochester is and what Rochester needs. And if you give me the opportunity, I could be a great leader. So, vote Abel on this August 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Abel. Kelly Ray?
Thank you. I'm a dedicated community leader and lifelong resident of Rochester. I've been an independent landscape design contractor for 23 years, and I personally put myself through college and graduate school, all while raising my family during some of the most challenging events of my life. I sit on numerous boards and community organizations where I represent a wide variety of our Rochester residents and projects. I also lead the Eastside Neighborhood Association as their president. Mark Bilderbach is retiring this year. He has a wealth of experience and knowledge. It's presumptive to assume that I can fill his big shoes. He knows how Ward 4 and the city works. When he leaves his position, through this pandemic, we will need a leader that can move us through racial disparities and significant changes in the way our city runs. The next Ward 4 council representative will need to be effective from day one. I'm the candidate to do this. Please vote for me to represent your voice in Ward 4. If you'd like more information, please visit my website at kellyforcouncil.org. You'll find all my contact information there, and I hope I've earned your vote this year. Thank you.
Thank you. To our Ward 4 candidates for Rochester City Council, that concludes this segment. We will take a short break. We will have two different segments with our Ward 6 candidates, since we have a large number of candidates who are running. Take a break, and we'll be back in about five minutes. Thank you all.